Thank you, sir. Everyone, this is Senator Higdon. He's here to do the swearing in of the new city elected council members. So I guess if...
Would you be interested in saying something else?
Yeah, if you want to stand up. Former Mayor Dick Keaton, John Kelly, you want to stand up? Joe Buckman, Bill Shackles. Those are the new ones. So yeah, Councilman Copeland, Roland Williams.
Ted.
We're just introducing. We've got it covered, John.
Yeah, I got this. We're doing good.
All right. Coach, if you don't mind, why don't you come on out front and get Keisha?
We have three minutes, sir.
Three minutes. Now just face me right there and we'll get you. I'm good just standing here.
Senator Higdon, two more minutes.
Right, and then you can call the meeting.
Two more minutes. Then I'll call the meeting over and then we can do that.
Okay. It'll be reflected in a minute.
Okay.
So we can get pictures taken if you want.
What I'll do, I'm just going to read the whole thing. All you have to do at the end is just say "I do," and it'll be done. You said "I do" before, right, Coach?
When I got married.
So that's what we'll do. I'll just read the whole thing and then I'll say "I do." At the end, when I say, "So help me God," simply say "I do." That's the simplest way.
All right.
We got the roses amongst the thorns here.
Are you talking about John?
No. Not about John.
It is 7:00 PM. I will call a meeting, a city council meeting to order, and the new city council is present. Senator Higdon will do the swearing in.
All right. Would you please raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of city council according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a deadly duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God, I do. Congratulations.
New city council members, there will be a city council working session for January the 3rd, 2017 at 5 p.m. In the county, I hear the city council's chambers. We're going to start, go ahead with the rest of the meeting. If you want to go, you may leave. If you want to stay, all are welcome to stay. I'm going to go ahead and go straight to Jeff Mills and go down to number three, bids, contract proposals, and service requests, and B of A, the SEPA contract renewal. Jeff?
The present council member, in fact, some of the new council may as well. The city of Owensboro takes care of our Southeast Power Administration allocation for hydro power from Cumberland River System. This is just simply a house cleaning renewal with them of the 2014 arrangement where they schedule our power for us and allocate the benefit to all of the cities that are part into that deal. And the reason for the change is SEPA's changed the rate to group for what they charge for power and a couple of other very minor house cleaning verbiage in here as ONU prepares to leave its arrangement with Kentucky Utilities. So it's fairly routine, but it requires ratification of the council.
Jeff, don't we do this every year regardless?
Unless there's a change, and there hasn't been a change since '14, but the power rate to the group from SEPA is the trigger this time.
So if there's not a change, we don't necessarily do it every year?
Correct. They anticipate a one-year arrangement this time in anticipation of restoration of our scheduling resources through the Wolf Creek Project. That still hasn't been brought fully up to speed at the Cumberland Dam where they did the dam repairs. So we didn't want to take any of, much of your time tonight with a busy agenda, but we needed the council's approval for the mayor's exit.
It's fit to get Brown, that's why it's called Brown Thornton on our behalf.
Hold on, so and our consultant, Brown Thornton, would actually do the signing down there at SEPA? So we don't have to travel there.
Yeah, sure. Well, I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor, authorize the mayor to sign the new agreement regarding SEPA allocations.
And authorizing Brown Thornton to then throw the sign on our behalf.
And then authorizing Brown Thornton to sign on the...
I have a second by Senator Higdon. Discussion. Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. I'm just going to send it to you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and skip down and I'm going to go to Ms. Linda Gray. Everyone knows it is for the audit for 2015-16. She's on the audit for as long as I can remember, so.
Few years. And I'm honored to be here again. I'm sorry my back's to some of you all, but the podium really helps me kind of flip in a lot of pages. But the audit went very well this year. You have a very competent staff. And I know I probably say that every year, but honestly, it's true. And that helps a lot. It helps facilitate everything. I don't know, I think you all had a draft last week. Maybe just got the final today. Couple of minor wording changes is the only thing. It was just kind of tough over the holidays, but we've got it all together now. The main thing is, if you want to look at page two, which is actually the fourth page, but it says page two at the bottom, and where we have our opinion, you have the best opinion you can get. It's what we call clean opinions, unmodified. Also, on page three, if we had any major findings, they would be listed on page three. And we have no major findings. So, you know, as far as the audit goes, these are the two of the most important things you want to look for. Then there's some other things I'd like to point out to you. Management rights, what's called a management discussion and analysis letter begins on page six, and it's a three-year comparison. It's very nice, very nicely done, and it's just kind of nice to see the changes. And after that, we have our financial statements. Governmental reporting has become very complicated over the years, and this is a Gatsby 34 implementation, which came to effect about 2002. So we have several sets of financial statements. The first ones are the government-wide statement of net position, and that combines all the activity. The governmental funds, proprietary funds, all the activity. On page 16, if you look in the far right-hand column at the bottom of the column, you'll see $100,224,036 total assets. This is the first year you all have passed the $100 million mark. So I thought that was pretty significant. And then on page 17, it shows your assets minus your liabilities equals, it's now called total net position, $69,732,654. So those are, those are pretty solid numbers. Now, if you want to look at page 19, you'll see for just this current year, where it says change in net position, a negative $1,683,926. Well, that's like saying a net loss. So that's, that's not so good. I mean, you have plenty of prior accumulated fund balances to cover that, but you know, it's not going in the right direction there. I think the next thing that I wanted to point out, if you look at page 22, now this is just the government, this is the general fund and the non-major governmental funds. But if you look down toward the bottom, when it says change, net change in fund balance, you have a negative $853,983 in the general fund. And that's, again, the same as saying a net loss. It's a pretty significant loss, so you know, that's not a good way to go. I think the new occupation of tax is going to help tremendously with this. So I think that was a wise decision on your own's part.
And then the statement, as Senator earlier noted, the inter-office transfers, which you, this was covered by a transfer from the utility understricter fund, so you don't show that, that's why it shows up as a loss.
Well, that's actually after the transfer's in. So you made up a lot of your fund balance last year. That's after. It was a lot worse before. It was the $3,015,000 number.
Oh, yeah.
Excess efficiency of revenues and expenditures over other sources and uses. So, but hopefully, you know, when you get a full year, the occupation will increase. I think for '17, you'll just see a small portion of it, but when you get that full year in there, I think it's going to really help. Now, pages 20, 29 to 49 are footnotes, and they basically back up these financial statements. And then there's just defer to the debt, refer to the capital assets, different things like that. The net pension liability, last year was the first year we had to record that on your financials, and it, it's a pretty big number. It's unfortunate that it's required, but it is. I think, let's see, your net pension liability is $12,674,000. And that's kind of a phantom liability in that it's like a bond issue that you're going to be paying back over the next few years. At this point, you're not being asked to pay it back. I know everyone's read about the pensions in Frankfurt and the whole mess. I don't know if they'll ever ask all the entities to pay any of that back, but right now, they're putting it on the financial statement. And so that, that makes everything look a lot worse. No doubt about it.
Let it not get too deep, no one's on that, though. Is that just a space attempt to clear off air pollution right on the city? I mean, I'd be disturbed there.
Well, you know, I worry that it's their first step, and then perhaps down the road, the next step is going to be, well, you need to start paying some of this back.
Because we were told we have to put it on your books, but don't worry about it because you really, you're not liable for it.
Well, you know, it's, it's a horrible issue. I mean, it really is. Let me say this, the city of Barstown has always paid, to my knowledge, everything that they were supposed to pay to the retirement system. You know, the portion that is withheld from the employees' paychecks and the portion that they have to pay in, which is significantly more, especially for hazardous, they've always paid that. So I don't want anyone to think that they got... Another, another thing I want to point out is on page 51, the general fund budget to actual report. You're only required to publish in your audit the major governmental fund budget to actual report, even though I know you do them for every fund. But that's why you only see the general fund in here. And the budget exceeded, the actual exceeded the budget by $233,000. Now, this was funded by transfers and was also funded by the prior year fund balance, even though, and I think it's mostly, Tracy and I have talked at length about budget amendments and budget transfers, and I don't, I guess, you know, I think she has a better understanding of how to do this toward the end. It has to be done by June 30th. You're allowed to go back and put your prior year fund balance in because you have that money. You don't know what it's going to be when you set the budget, because you're setting the budget about March and April before the year even ends. So it's really more of a misunderstanding, but I did have to mention that. Another interesting amount, well, let me, let me just mention about the E911 fund. If you recall, last year on page 53, we had zero to fund out, and they have become their own entities, and all their assets were transferred to their own entity. So that's why, that's there, and it's, it's not going to be part of your financials anymore. Page 56 and 57 is an interesting analysis. This is segment reporting, and it breaks down electric, water, sewer, cable, garbage, and internet. And we're showing losses in water, cable, and garbage before any transfers in or out, and we're showing losses in water, sewer, cable, and garbage after. So, and that's all part of the loss that we talked about earlier. Now, cable and internet are closely related. Internet had a nice gain, cable had a loss, and there could be some misallocation there between expenses, probably as we've, we've talked about it. And the same thing with water and sewer, you know, there could be, because we had a pretty good gain in sewer before the transfers out, but water had a loss. So you probably need to consider those together. But overall, the, the loss in the proprietary funds of $737,000 is pretty significant. And I think you all have received the letter of comments that I have. I have three comments. The first one, and these are the comments that would be in the audit report if they were significant. But the first one is, I just don't want the city to forget that the E911, when we had to put that net pension liability in the audit report last year, over a million dollars of it was for E911. And somehow, they need to, they need to work with the retirement system and see if they can get this transferred to the E911 and off of your records. Because all the years that it was part of your finances, you know, their retirement was paid using your name and your ID number, and so this liability's been built up. I don't even know if there's a precedent for it because it's in the hands of the retirement, you know. But if at all possible, for the city's sake, you know, it'd be good to get it transferred. You may be a test case for it, I don't know. The second comment is what we talked about, expenditures from the general fund exceeded the budget in May. And then the third comment was a repeat somewhat about internal controls over credit card purchases. And this is always a weak area, and there's, there's not as much control because, you know, it doesn't go through the system the way, you know, they're not getting purchase orders a lot of times, and they're not getting permission, or they're using it for things they shouldn't, or they're paying sales tax, or they're not keeping their receipts, so we don't know for sure, you know. But they have already, management has already put some controls in place, and they say they're working better. So that's good. You want to safeguard your money. And the third document I had for you is, this is just required audit communication. And at the back, it shows the journal inquiries I made to the numbers that Carrie had, which mostly are related to the pension liability, to be honest with you, because Carrie pretty much does all the other adjustments. But, but if you have any questions, you know, my phone number's on the front. I'd be happy, you know, call me anytime you have any questions. I do work out of the office a lot, but I'll get back to you, I promise.
Just one question about the, it was a general obligation bond that we rolled over or changed to a utility bond, and that was on your, in your preliminary notes, page seven. Do you know when that happened?
Yeah.
That just seemed like I've heard of that before, but that, this was on page six of your draft. Did city pay the $1,085 towards this bond as debt?
Oh, that's the MDA you're talking about. Page six is the MDA. Yeah, that's Tracy's.
Tracy knows, Tracy knows about that pretty.
When did that happen, Tracy? Do you know?
It was refinanced in 2010.
Oh, it's been that long?
Yeah, and then it's up December of 2020.
It's five more years, right? That's why I seen it as good.
It's back here in the footnote. I'm just trying to find the right page.
That's okay.
But yeah, she's right. No, there was no new debt this year. Any other questions? Well, like I said, feel free to call me if you have anything to think of any. Thank you all very much. Thank you, lady.
We'll go back to number two there. Need to receive input from the public, anybody have anything to say? Okay, move on. Go back to number three, B, which C's and D's, the LLC service request for an extension on sewer main. Looks like Horizon Engineering needs some work on that.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request for mainstream development lot four sewer
I'll second it. Second by Councilman Williams. Discussion?
Once again, I'm assuming they've signed the annexation agreement. This is for sewer.
It's all right. Okay, and first, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. All right, thank you. Let's move to number C, city council investigation, contract with services.
I guess I'll take that, because I'm the one ahead on the agenda. I'll try to make this kind of short and sweet. After, after last week's meeting, when I began thinking more about this, and actually I contacted some of the new incoming council members, I haven't talked to Keisha or Roland, but I got more of an impression that perhaps it would be better to allow the next council to take this up. If we sign a contract, it locks them in to something, and the more I thought about it, the more I thought it would be better to just let, rather than locking them into something, let them review it, make sure that that's what they want to do, and they can make their own determination on the attorney. If we sign a contract and they, they want to do something differently, it would really be, it would be very awkward, and I guess, I feel like that, again, in thinking about it, it would be better not to do that. So I'm not prepared to make a motion to, to sign this contract that I had put in the package.
That's the one I'm trying to make, that's amazing, too.
So no one, so a second corollary to that, we also talked about, I think Bill mentioned, trying, you know, assigning somebody else to manage this on the council, since, of course, I'm not going to be here. I'd asked John Kelly if he would, would mind doing that. I thought he would be a good person to, to do it, and we, we kind of picked me in formally, so I don't know if we have to go around, but really, Keisha and Roland, it's kind of... I think, I think it would be good to have a point person for those first few days, especially if we have a working session, so. So I'm going to share all this, these information I shared with you folks, I'm going to share that, I'm going to share it with all of the incoming council. That's that.
Okay, let's move on. HRB, VRBs, and claims on conditions. COA 16, or the Knights of Columbus applicant owner of 111 North Fourth Street.
I'm going to read A, B, and C, and then we'll leave D for discussion. COA 16-108 Knights of Columbus applicant owner proposed to install signage at 111 North Fourth Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of two new signs. COA 16-110 Justin Durbin applicant owner proposes to renovate the front porch at 115 East John Fitch. Recommendation: Approval to renovate the porch with the following conditions. Condition: The proposed material for the columns and the railings are solid wood and that the final design will be approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 16-112 Stiles Corner and Associates applicant owner proposed to install signage at 120 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the two new signs.
So we'll take the motions for just A, B, and C, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve COA 16-108, COA 16-110, and COA 16-112. Can I yield the floor for a second?
With the conditions?
With the conditions, with the conditions stated in the application.
Second then. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Okay.
Do you have any questions?
The next one is, is an appeal. That was the appeal that was heard prior to the, I think, last time's meeting, or prior to...
December 6.
Yeah, December 6. It was sent back to the Historic Review Board upon the motion of the council to have the Historic Review Board review the information that was provided to the council at that meeting. I believe that they have done that. If the matter's not, not back before you for a public hearing, so it's not open to public comment, but it is for your all's consideration, discussion, and action. And I think that your timeframe for action is limited, so I would suggest that if you, if at all possible, you take action this evening.
Questions is, is, can, may the council, if they have questions to either HRB or to the new ones, can they ask, or?
Not if it's something that they would be outside of the record. Your, your appeal is limited to the record as constituted as part of the hearing and both before the HRB and then before the city council. So, and I believe, sorry, I almost let it slip up on, Councilwoman Copeland is going to be abstaining from the vote, and if you want to give a description or explanation, you can.
Is she going to recuse, leave the room, or abstain?
Abstain.
So her vote will go with the majority?
That she can recuse or abstain. I know she's just not going to comment or participate in discussion.
Okay, but her vote will go, if she says her vote will go with the majority?
So you all can discuss, you can deliberate. This is typically what happens at the end, you know, in the... This is typically what happens at the end, you know, in the past, we've done, had the public hearings, and we've deliberated, made a motion at the end of the public hearing. This was sent back for the input from the Historical Review Board to look at the information that was submitted, and to get their opinion concerning the information that was submitted as part of the appeal.
Tim, do we need to make a motion first before discussion?
You can, but in this particular case, you can deliberate and to formulate a motion.
If you'd like.
No, no, I may ask.
No, of course, no.
I can read if you'd like.
Well, I'll start the discussion. I, like all of us, have read everything very carefully, read the HRB guidelines, I've read the minutes from both the meetings, and my opinion is that the, I'm inclined to approve the recommendation of the Historical Review Board. I think they've done the proper review. I think their reasons are in accordance with the guidelines, so that's, that's my opinion.
And I would uphold the Historical Review Board as well. We, we had the hearing, and at that hearing, we heard information that they hadn't been privy to, so we did as a, we as a courtesy, sent it back to them, so they could have that same information, to see if they came to a different decision. And they did not.
Well, I'm the opposite. My opinion is that that house has no historical value, but there's a lot that is on, and across the street, a more historical house was tore down by the county, and there was no outcry for that one. And they got a parking lot now, and this here, this store, we're not worrying about Newton making money. This is a hub for every working-class people in Barstown. In the mornings, getting their coffee, getting their, taking their kids to school, that's the only thing for four blocks and four directions. It's a very important hub for the working-class people in Barstown.
Do I both tear it down?
Well, my biggest concern is the, the people that we have turned down for removing their houses and different things with the historical end of it, and now we turn around and we do just the opposite, I have some concern about that.
I got some, I think it's important that we base our decisions on the Historical Review Board guidelines. I don't think we should make our decisions based on what we've done in the past. We should make our decision on how somebody's going to get their coffee in the morning, because the, our responsibility lies with following the guidelines in the Historical Review Manual. We, if we start going outside of that and picking other reasons to do something, then that is a wide open, that, that road has no end. We must base our decisions, as the Historical Review Board did, on the guidelines of the Historical Review Board guidelines. That, we can't look at the economic impact of people getting their breakfast, or whatever, or it's, or it's a hub, because that's not what we should, if we start that, I think we're, we're using the wrong reasons. That's why I have read the guidelines, and looked at what was applied with the application, and looked at what's required by the guidelines, and to me, that's, that's, that's why I come down on that side.
If I'm not mistaken, based on components of evidence, the whole purpose of their appeal was economic hardship, and I didn't see anywhere in here where they meant that for economic hardship. So, I support HRB, as I stated earlier.
I agree with you on that, the evidence, Roland.
I believe there's been precedents set in the past that can't be ignored.
Well, with that, I'll make a motion, we approve the recommendation of the Historical Review Board on COA 16-85.
And I'll second. With the condition?
Well, I was just going to say, and you would adopt the reasoning and the findings that the Historical Review Board has made during their deliberations?
Regarding economic hardship.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Motion by Fred.
I'll second it.
By Councilman Williams. All in favor?
Discussion, sir.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Discussion? Another discussion?
Just in case.
Okay. I want to call for the individual voting this.
Please.
Okay. All in favor, so?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Okay. Three to one.
Thought it would be four to one.
Actual vote is, actual vote is to keep it will be four to one. Okay, so the decision of the, of the City Council on Appeal is that the house at 118 East Stephen Foster Avenue will remain and will not be torn down. That was the council's decision.
Can you proper notification with the intent?
Yes.
Proper notification with the intent.
Things, just move on. We don't have any correspondence. Review of the minutes, regular council meeting of 12/13/2016. That's okay, by unanimous consent, I'll approve those minutes. Thank you. The financial, oh, I did that, I'm sorry. Ordances, no, there are no ordinances. Reports of staff and committees, and I guess what I'd like to do is, is, Larry, do you have anything? Tracy?
No.
Chief?
Nothing.
Bye. Very good. Good. What I would like to do is to recognize Fred Hagan and Bobby Simpson, and for your extended long service, I would, I'd like to thank Bill for his service, and not everyone can do this job. It takes a lot from yourself, takes a lot of, it's not for everyone, it takes a lot of study, it's not that you just come up here and vote. If you do what you're supposed to do, it takes a lot of your personal time. And I think some on the City Council is coming back on the City Council, Dick, Bill can contest to that, so, but I'd like to recognize you all, thank you for your service. I do appreciate it. Okay. There's no unfinished business. New business is code enforcement board, the reaportment of market sales for a three-year term, which expires on 12/22, or did expire 12/22 of 2016. I need a motion for that. Second by, which one do I want?
Councilman Williams. He was more purple.
All right, all in favor? Those opposed?
No.
No. Is that a no?
Yes.
Okay. So it's three to two.
Three to two, all right. You know, and that's, that's another hard job to do, is the code enforcement, because sometimes you have to, you have to tell it like it is, and you have to abide by the rules and regulations, and there's, sometimes you don't bend those, and you shouldn't bend them, because they are there for everyone. So it's a hard job to do. We'll go to City Council members' comments. Bobby?
Well, the only comment I got today is I appreciate all the people that supported me for the last 16 years. It's been a long journey, I've enjoyed it, and with that, also, the employees. You make good relationships here, and it's going to be hard for a while, but, and wish the new council the best, that, hope we can keep Barstown going and move forward. And, but it has been, it has been a great experience, and I thank the people for giving me that opportunity.
Bobby, I don't thank you personally for, when I first come on in 2005, for taking me under your wing, and I appreciate that. Do appreciate it. Bill?
I appreciate the support I've got for the last two years in the council. It's been a rough experience, it's rougher than policing. Wish the new council luck, hope you do well, hope you make the changes that we started, and keep, we keep going what we hoped to achieve, and, glass over.
Mr. Williams? Okay, Chief, are you familiar with that information I gave you?
Just got it, sir.
Okay. Well, apparently, allegedly, well, no, apparently, there was an accident in the 300 block on South Fourth Street, Christmas morning, a vehicle, I think which was a truck, hit a pole, severed the pole, separated from the base, and it's just now freestanding in the grass. I went by there today and took pictures, deal that way. It's, it's some kind of power line, and police came, you saw officer's name and report there, believe that's the officer. Two other vehicles apparently came as well, tow truck, and the person who shared the information with me at the beginning, it says no affiliation to any entity, and the reason he put that there is because he is a news anchor for WLKY, and he didn't want anyone to think that he was working on behalf of them. His mother lives across the street from where it was happening. So, he gives me the impression that maybe this person might, may have been allegedly under some kind of influence, didn't know for sure, because there were other fumes and other smells and so forth. But the concern is that the situation may not have been handled correctly. And so, also have another email from another person, which who I failed to bring, and I apologize, which basically states what is stated in that email. So-
Give me, no, I just got this, give me an opportunity to look in. I can go back with you tomorrow, sir.
I understand. Appreciate it. Okay, Freddie?
Well, I guess I should say some farewell words. Now, this is my third time around, and I've told people sometimes it's like having a root canal. After a while, you think, well, that wasn't so bad, I think I'll do that again. So, I've been around three times, I've enjoyed it, I'm proud of what I've done, I wish to, the next council, all the luck in the world. Call me if you need anything. Thanks.
Councilman Copeland?
Yes. I have a question in regards to South Fourth Street. Recently, we've brought it to the attention that the speeding down there, they're running stop signs, and the speed where there, there are kids in this neighborhood, and there is the basketball court. And so, at any given time, a basketball could go into the road, or a kid could go into the road, and the speed isn't being controlled. Early on, I think our first year of council, the police officers would be backed into Colonel Hopps driveway, just to get a good gauge of if they're speeding, or if they could actually get the person that is speeding off that hill going from Heaven Hill. So, what I'm trying to see is, what can we do to watch this area? I go down that road too, and, you know, at any given time, if you're not paying attention, you might get rammed from the behind, because they're not stopping at the stop signs. And it's just dangerous. It's really dangerous. It's dark down there at night. I've inquired about the lights down there. But what, what do you think that we can do, other than doing speed bumps? Can we get more policing down there, possibly?
Yes, we can get, make that an area that we do look at more closely, yes. But again, it's dependent on the call load in the city. We could put some officers down there. We'll look at the, the time in the evening where, probably during the time where people are going to and from work. So we'll look at that time and see if we can get some officers down there to at least stop some of the more flagrant violators, and maybe the word will get out on us. Speed bumps wouldn't necessarily help us down there, but yes, we'll get officers down there during the middle of the hour.
And then to give them credit, I mean, they were down there, early on, 2015. They would regularly come down and, and check that area, but recently, there's been a lack of presence down there, and so the speeding has gotten worse. And you can tell just, you know, with that accident that happened, that, that, you know, speeding and other things. So, if, if we can get a report back sometime in a couple of months, or what have you, what the, what's going on, or what they see, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, if I could make one more comment, I forgot to mention. Sure. Okay. According to the email, a drainage ditch may be damaging that area as well, and a hubcap apparently came off and possibly did some damage to a home on that street as well.
Do you know when this may have happened?
This is the same incident.
Same, same incident?
Christmas morning, about 1:00. And maybe that, that hubcap coming off that car will not be anything related to the city. That will have to go back to the car that crashed into the boat. No, I was just, I forgot to mention that, that. Okay. Anything else? Cemetery deeds, Donald Ryan, two grave sites, and Marion Russey, one grave site, and I'll approve those, if that's okay with the unanimous consent. Thank you. There are no announcements, and I will take a motion for adjournment.
So will you. Motion's adjourned.
Second? Second by Councilman Simpson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.